Hey, welcome back. We are super excited. We are in the Book of James. This is James Session 3, so Part 3 to our study in the Book of James. God bless you. Thank you so much. If you're joining us for the first time, we say welcome. We want you to know that you are loved and God's got a plan for you. And it's super exciting. It's an honor to teach you the Word of God tonight. If you'd like, go to our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. Whitestonechurchtx.com. Go to the contact page. Send us your email. We'll be happy to send you our notes. We have a large growing list of emails that we'll send out to you every Tuesday and Thursday night, whatever the topic is. If you've missed any of our studies in James, please go to our YouTube channel, Whitestone Church TX. Go to the playlist. You'll find all of our videos from Revelation to hell to this current study in the Book of James. So God bless you so much for joining us. I want to give a big shout out to my dad, James Ellison Corbin. Today is his 74th birthday. June the 18th, 1946. The world was changed forever at the birth of my dad. And so Dad, I love you. I'm proud of you. It is an honor to be your son. Thank you for loving me and raising me and loving our family. Thank you for everything that you have done, you are doing, and will do. And God bless you. I love you, Dad. Amen. Let's get started. Grab your Bible. Grab your notes. Grab something to write with. And let's dive into James Chapter 2. So we're in the second chapter, but this is our third session together. So Father, we love you. God, we ask that you would speak to us tonight, God, that you would open up our hearts, our minds. And God, that you would pour out your Spirit. Say that with me, Father. Pour out your Spirit. God, open my ears, open my eyes, open my mouth. God, help me to do what you created me to do, in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. Say this out loud with me. God created me for a purpose. God needs me to achieve the purpose for which I was created. Let's say it again. God created me with a purpose. God needs me to achieve the purpose for which He created me. Listen, God made you with a blueprint. He made you with a plan. He preordained your steps. He predestined you to achieve specific things on your life here on planet earth. You did not evolve from a monkey. You did not come from this mysterious Big Bang Evolution lie. You came from the very hand and mouth and mind and creation of God, the Creator. You're the created. He's the Creator. A Creator makes creations for a purpose. So He created you to do a job, to achieve a specific goal. Now, in your mind, that may be minute and small. In man's mind, it may be minute and small. In man's eyes, it may be big and large. But God created you to do something that is huge in the Kingdom of God. God may have just created you to change one life in the entire scope of humanity. God may have created you to impact a billion lives in the scope of humanity. We may consider Billy Graham a bigger influence than the no-name preacher that only saved or led one person to the Lord. But in the scope of heaven, the two cannot exist without each other. The two are God's purpose. So God created you with a purpose. In the Book of James, Jesus' brother, James, his younger brother, who wrote this book, is pushing us with great boldness and not pulling any punches. He's pushing us to achieve the purpose for which we were created. So let's dive in. James Chapter 2, Verse 1, and let's read this together. In your notes, my lead-off verse is 1 Corinthians 9. I forgot. 1 Corinthians 9:24. "Do you not know that all those who run in a race..." Do you not know that those who run in a race all run? Do you not know that everybody in a race, everybody runs? If you see the Olympic race, everyone runs. But one receives the prize. You may have 10 runners. You may have 100 runners. You may have the Boston Marathon with 1,000 runners, but only one wins the prize. Listen, God tells you to run the race of life to win. Run your race. Don't run mine. Don't run my beautiful bride Stacy's. Don't run my dad's. Don't run Billy Graham's. Don't look at what somebody else is doing. Run the race that God created you to run and win. Win the prize. Don't look back. You may have already fallen down. You may have already skinned your knee. You may have already quote-unquote disqualified yourself. You may have already quit and headed to the showers. God says, look, get back on track and run the race to win. This Book of James, the very brother of Jesus, did not get saved until after the death of Jesus. James, Jesus' very own brother, didn't believe in him. Didn't... We covered that in James in our first session together. His very own siblings didn't believe in him until he died and rose from the grave. And Jesus showed himself to James. And then James, the younger brother of Jesus, who wrote this book, then James spent the rest of his life winning and achieving the purpose that God created him for. God created James to be the younger brother of Jesus. And could you imagine living up to that status? Hey, you're nothing like your brother. He walked on water. What can you do? Oh, you can swim? Wow, big deal. Your brother can, you know, feed 5,000. What can you do? Your brother can heal blind eyes. What can you do? I mean, we don't know what it was like growing up to be James, but he was like, man, I can never measure up. But James, when he got saved, he then dedicated the rest of his life to following Jesus Christ, his very own brother, his very own Savior, his God. So much so that James ended his life after a... Well, others ended his life after a sermon. The end of his life ended like this. James was preaching to Jewish men and women, declaring that Jesus is God, being the very spokesperson. And he makes the crowd so mad and so angry at him that they pick up stones and stone him to death. And on his grave, at his death, he prays, a very similar prayer to Jesus prayed on the cross and Stephen prayed in Acts Chapter 7, and says, "Father, forgive them. They do not know what they're doing. Don't hold their sin against them." James died a martyr's death because of his bold proclamation of Jesus Christ. He finished the race. He won the race. You may say, yeah, but he wasted the first 30 years of his life. He didn't start well. That's right. The first half of his life was horrible, but he went into the locker room. He found Jesus. He got taped up, and he finished the third and fourth quarters and won the game. This is the analogy is a football game. Some of us started our first quarter and we played really, really well. But the second and third quarters of our life, we just fell off the map. We got addicted. We got rebellious. We hardened our heart. We just gave up on God. We just went through the motions. We went through divorce. Our families fell apart. Our dreams were shattered. God says, listen, you're in the fourth quarter of your life. It's time to get back in the game. Let's win. The devil wants you to believe that you've already lost. Just sit on the bench. Just shut your mouth. Live your life. Just do whatever. And there's no way you could... Listen, the devil's a liar. He can't stand you. He wants you to die. He wants to steal from you, destroy you. God says, I want you to live. I want you to live abundantly. I want you to achieve the purpose for which I created you. And I want you to win the race so that I can reward you with the prize. Can I get an amen? So God is calling us to win this race. James Chapter 2, Verse 1. James says this, "My brethren, Cameron, put your name there. My Cameron, my Whitestone Church, do not hold the faith of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Lord of glory, with partiality." Now, he's going to dig deep, and this is what our culture in America is walking through right now. I want you to remember, he's talking to the church. He's talking to believers. He's not talking to those sinners out there. He's talking to the professing Christians. He says, listen, don't hold the faith of Jesus with partiality. In other words, don't just share the gospel with some people. Don't just share the gospel with those who it's easy to share it with. Don't just take the gospel. Don't pick and choose who you love. He says, "For if there should come into your assembly or church service a man with gold rings, fine apparel, and then there should also come into your church service a poor man in filthy clothes, and you pay attention to the one wearing fine clothes and say to him, 'Oh, you sit here in a good place,' and you say to the poor man, 'You stand over there in the corner or sit here on the floor.' Have you not shown partiality among yourselves and become judges with evil thoughts?" Listen, when James writes this, he just got through telling us in Chapter 1, hey, listen, if you want real religion, pure and undefiled religion before God and the Father is this, visit orphans, widows in trouble, and keep yourself unspotted from the world. So I really want you to write that down, unspotted from the world. He got through in Chapter 1 saying, hey, listen, if you want to, if you truly want real religion... Now, in this sense, religion's a good word. If you really want to act out what's real, if you really want to act out what's holy, take care of orphans who can't repay you. Take care of orphans who will drain your pocketbook. Take care of orphans who will keep you up all night because they can't sleep. Take care of orphans who are extra work because they've been through really tough circumstances. Take care of widows who can't repay you. Take care of widows who want to spend a lot of time with you and slow you down. Take care of widows who are abandoned and alone. Take care of these people. And hey, keep yourself unspotted from the world. Now, so he starts to dig in Chapter 2 to this being spotted in the world. And he's saying, hey, listen, if a rich guy comes into your church, if a popular guy comes into your church, if a good-looking woman comes into your church, if somebody, if the mayor comes in, well, I don't... Let me not get started on the mayor today. If the governor comes in or President Trump comes into your church, don't set them in a place of prominence. And then the next person that steps, walks in the church is this homeless guy that hasn't bathed in four months and, you know, has no teeth. And you know he just wants to get some food. And you tell him, oh, hey, look, look, no-name homeless guy. You sit in the back corner and keep your mouth shut because we need to put you over there in your six-foot zone because you smell so bad. Or, hey, sit on the floor, bro, because we're packed house. Listen, if that's the kind of religion that we're going to practice, James says, we're showing partiality with the Word of God. And then look at Verse 4. He says, "Cameron, when you do that, you have become a judge with evil thoughts." Actions speak louder than words. We all know that. Be a doer, not just a hearer. Treat people or other people, the way that we treat other people is the way that we really feel about God. Now, let's think, let's take some of these. Let me ask this question. Have you ever been mistreated or prejudged based upon your appearance? We live in a culture right now, in June of 2020, where racial division based upon the color of one's skin or division based upon the position of authority one holds or doesn't hold, i.e. policeman or woman versus non-police man or woman. We live in a day and age right now where there is great division based upon appearance. You may see someone that has a different color skin than you have, and you may show partiality to that person. You may see someone that has a uniform on that's different than your uniform. You may have the uniform of a McDonald's employee, and another person has the uniforms, uh, uniform of a policeman or woman. And you may show partiality. What James says here, listen, I'm not telling you what kind of partiality you show based upon skin color. You may, you may sit them in the seat of prominence and put that skin color at the front and this other skin color at the back. You may put this employee's uniform at the front and the other one in the back, or vice versa. I don't know what kind of partiality that you struggle with, but what James is saying is, hey, listen, in the Kingdom of God, there is no place for partiality when it comes to the gospel, the message, the love, the correction, the rebuke, the discipline of Jesus Christ. So he's going to hit home really deep. And before we just hang out on the surface and in the kiddie pool and just chalk it up to skin tones or skin pigment or skin differentiation between people, let's dive a little bit deeper because most of you hearing have automatically said in your mind, oh, Cameron, I don't show partiality. I don't judge people. I don't, I don't, I don't struggle with color. I don't struggle with uniforms of different people. Okay, I understand, and I appreciate that, but let's dig a little deeper. Is that cool? Let's dig a little deeper. Verse 5. "Listen, my beloved Cameron. Listen, my beloved Whitestone. Put your name in the Bible." Again, when he says brethren, he's not talking to sinners in the world. He's talking to the church, okay? Hey, church people, don't be nicer to the famous guy that comes in the door than the unfamous guy. Don't, don't show partiality to the theologian versus the guy that just bought a Bible yesterday and hasn't even read it yet. Don't show partiality. Here we go. "Listen, my beloved. Has God not chosen the poor of this world to be rich in faith and heirs of the kingdom, which He promised to those who love Him?" Hey, hasn't God chosen the poor? Listen, when James is speaking this, who's he speaking to? He's talking to the Jewish people. These Jewish people, they may have been rich monetarily. They may have had some wealth on one part of town. And the other part of town, they didn't have wealth. He's not dividing them like that in this statement. He's saying, you as a nation, you're like the dogs, the scrubs of the earth. You are the poorest clan tribe on the planet. Nobody respects you. Nobody likes you. Rome wishes they could annihilate you. The Philistines, the Samaritans, all these differentites of the world, they have been after you. And by the way, in 2020, they still are. It's called antisemitism. They're, 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 they're out... Listen, God's chosen the poor. Now, this poor does have to do with bank account when it comes to the surface level of how we show partiality. But it's also talking about the poor in a different way. So he says, "Has God not chosen the poor of this world to be rich in faith and heirs of the kingdom, which He promised to those who love Him? But you have dishonored the poor man, Cameron. Do not the rich oppress you and drag you into courts? Do they not blaspheme the noble name by which you are called?" Now, listen, you ever heard of the unpardonable sin? Uh, yeah. I don't want to do that one, right? The unpardonable sin is blasphemy of the Holy Spirit. James just pulls the blasphemy card. He says, "Do they not blaspheme that noble name?" What's that noble name? Jesus the Christ. How do they blaspheme him? By the works that they do. How do you not blaspheme the name of God? You may have never said GD when you stubbed your toe. You may have never said Jesus Christ when you hit your hand with a hammer. You may have never blasphemed the Lord in your mind with your words. But have we ever blasphemed the Lord through our actions? Have we ever said one thing and done something very different? You know, one of the Ten Commandments. It's one that we think we grasp. At least I did, or I do, and God continues to blow my mind on it. But, but he says, hey, listen, Cameron, thou shall not take the Lord thy God's name in vain. Well, when he said that, did the Israelites in the desert, did they have a cussing problem? I mean, what was the deal? Were they in the desert, you know, saying, "God, OMG, OMG"? I mean, were they, were they just blaspheming God by cussing His name? They didn't even know Jesus, so they weren't saying Jesus Christ yet. Were they just walking around? Every other word was a bad word out of the... No, that's not taking the Lord's name in vain. Taking the Lord's name in vain is doing something in the name of the Lord that He would not do. A real obvious example would be, I'm going to blow up the abortion clinic in the name of Jesus Christ because God hates murder. Well, I'm going to go do something quote-unquote in the name of God that, that wouldn't line up with His character. God, God doesn't tell us to go blow it. He says, pray for those who curse you. Bless those, you know, pray for your oppressors. Pray for those who are trapped in that industry, trapped in that, that, that lie. Listen, God says, listen, "Don't blaspheme" means, don't go do something in the name of God that He wouldn't do. Don't attach His name to it. Here we go. "Listen, do they not blaspheme that noble name?" When we do not act the way Jesus would act, we are blaspheming the noble name of Jesus. Second point, Jesus was poor. Just say that out loud. Jesus was poor. According to social standards of the Jewish day, Jesus was poor. He's a common boy. His daddy's a carpenter, not a senator. His daddy's a laborer, not a, not an engineer. His daddy is just a common car... Isn't that the carpenter's boy? That's gee, wait. Hey, guys, that's Jesus, Joseph's son, the carpenter. I mean, we need some carpenters, but man, he's not the top dog in society. Joseph was just a commoner. Isn't that Jesus from Nazareth? He came from that loser town over there? Have you ever been judged on your job? You ever been socially judged by other people? You ever like maybe walked into a room of people with PhDs and higher learning education degrees or certificates or whatever, and you walk in and you barely got through the seventh grade and you may have gotten your GED and you quote-unquote are the carpenter? And certain circles, they kind of snub their nose at you and go, oh, there's the laborer. We're the educated ones. Or have you ever walked into a place and been judged by the town you grew up in? Or maybe the college you went to isn't as prestigious as the college that all of your counterparts went to. So you don't really hang that degree on the wall because that's from that lower college. This is from the hobby of the world, you know, wherever. So Jesus was poor. Jesus is born in a manger. Jesus came from the wrong town. His birth was scandalous. Think about it. Joseph's like, excuse me, Mary, do what? What? "I'll put you away quietly because I truly love you and I'm a man of integrity." Jesus was just a carpenter's son. Jesus was not from traditional teaching circles. John the Baptist was a desert dweller. Gideon was from the least family. Saul was the king chosen by his outward appearance. 1 Samuel 16 says, "But the Lord said to Samuel, 'Do not look at his appearance or his physical stature, because I have refused him; for the Lord does not see as a man sees; for a man looks at the outward appearance, but the Lord sees the heart.'" Have you ever judged somebody based on their outward appearance? The answer is yes. You and I do it all the time. How many times have we judged someone, but then when we got to know them, when we got, when we, when we learned who they were on the inside, we said, you know, man, I just totally misjudged you. When I, when I first met you, I thought you were a snob. When I, when I first met you, I thought you were an elitist. When I first met... You've said it. I've said it. We do it all the time. James is saying, "Let it not be so in the house of God." Because that very act is blaspheming the character, the, the, the name of Jesus Christ. I'm a Christian. I'm a Christ follower. I'm a Jesus Christ follower. I claim Jesus Christ as my Lord, as my Savior. I claim to be His Son, His creation. I do things in His name. But not everything I do is what He would do. So God says, be careful. Acts Chapter 10, Verse 34, "God is no respecter of persons." I have a friend of mine, and he does it with all graciousness and kindness, but he goes, oh, man, God listens to you pray, Cameron. God, God listens to you. I'm like, but He listens to you on the same level. Oh, man, God really must have answered Billy Graham's prayers. No, I just think Billy Graham probably prayed more. Maybe he trusted more. See, God doesn't respect Billy Graham's prayers more than yours, your prayers or preacher so-and-so more than your prayers. He doesn't respect the prayers of the eloquent prayerer who uses some really good big, you know, grammatical words and correct sentences and all that. He listens to our hearts. He respects us based upon our relationship with Him, not our money, our status, our outside appearance. There's different kinds of pride because pride really is at the root of all partiality. And I'm trying to use that word partiality in, in replacement of prejudice because that's such a buzzword today. But do you show partiality? Do you show partiality to your kids over the orphan? "Oh, look, we're doing this fundraiser at church for the orphanage, for the children's home. Listen, let's give them all the old clothes. They should be thankful for something." Now, I'm not going to go to the store and buy them good, brand-new clothes. I'm just going to give them the old stuff. "Oh, I know. Happy you just turned me off. I know. I've done it all, all my life." God's like, hey, the homeless guy on the corner, why don't you go buy him a hot hamburger or whatever? And you not eat, Cameron? "I only got 10 bucks. You'll live?" "Well, God, he'll be happy with some crackers and cheese. I got, I got some leftovers in the backseat. Can I take two or three bites?" I mean, he ought to be thankful for that. I'm just saying, you're with me. I know you're with me. You're still with me. There's different levels of pride. There's spiritual pride. Have you ever judged somebody based upon their spirituality? Have you ever considered yourself more spiritual than somebody else? There's physical pride. "Look how strong I am. Look at my beautiful body." Well, all pretty people onstage to be worship singers. Just the pretty people. We only need pretty people up on the stage. No ugly people. We have to set a good image. Oh, I'm sorry. Economic pride. Social status pride. Intellectual pride. Religious pride. Well, look at my lifestyle versus their lifestyle. They are sinners. I am the saint. Theological pride. Well, I come from this denomination, and we sure don't act like those people over there at that church. In fact, on Sundays, I don't even think God goes to their church because obviously they are doing it wrong. Do you see the way they take communion on that church? Do you see the way they preach at that? Do you see the way they worship over there? Did you know that the way they baptize is not the way we do it? We are the chosen frozen. We are the ones. Your past versus other people's past pride. Have we ever judged people based on those things? The answer is yes. Probably every one of those. Probably today forty-eight times. Let me tell you what leads to our judgment and we'll read this verse in just a minute. Greed and selfishness, jealousy and idolatry lead to our judgment. I heard it said best, uh, and, and um, I've thought about this greatly in regard to our own church, Whitestone. We have a, you know, probably two hundred plus people that call us their church home. And, uh, so we're a, you know, just an average sized church. We're not this mega church. We're not this little church numerically. In the kingdom, we're a church full of dynamite. And we rock hell every Sunday morning when we worship and we preach and the devil uh, gets scared every time we open our doors and worship Jesus. Can I get amen? So we're a threat to the kingdom of hell. I promise you that. But I heard it said, um, in regard to the finances of a church one day, it said, you know, who's on your board of, of church finance directors? And, you know, I'm like, you know, listening to these guys and we go, well, we got CPA so and so on our board and we got accountant so and so on our finance team. And we've got businessman so and so on our team. And we've got, you know, millionaire financier so and so on our team over here. And this guy said something really cool one day and it's challenged me even to today. He said, um, he said, well, where's the widow with two mites? Is she on your finance team? Uh, 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 well, no, we just need, uh, uh, we need, um, people that are, uh, see, the widow with the two mites knew more about money than anybody else in that church service. I mean, that's stepping on my toes. I'm, I'm preaching to myself. I'm, I'm just saying, how do we show partiality? And what's the consequence? The consequence is we will miss the prize. We won't win the race. It's what this is all about. Cameron, if you show partiality, you're gonna miss the jewel. In that snotty-nosed ragtag kid that is a, a mess. That kid, he's my next preacher. But because he smells bad and because you gotta drive twenty-five minutes out of your way to pick him up because his parents are losers and they don't wake up and they don't care and you gotta, you gotta, you gotta pay for his lunch every Sunday after church. I know he's a big pain and he's, and he, and he's not the prima donna teenager. He's never gonna win the, the, you know, uh, the most popular award. He probably doesn't even that good, but man, that's my preacher. Would you quit showing partiality? I know, I know. I hope you're still there. Verse eight. If you really fulfill the royal law according to scriptures, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. Well, that's good. Have you seen Mister Rogers? Would you like to be my neighbor? You shall love your neighbor as yourself and you do well, but if you show partiality, you commit sin, Cameron. And you are convicted by the law of transgressors, transgressors. Whoever shall keep the whole law yet stumble in one point is guilty of all. Do you, for he who said, do not commit adultery, also said, do not murder. Now, if you do not commit adultery, but you murder, you've become a transgressor of the whole law. What James is saying is here, listen, I know that you, you don't cuss and you don't chew and you don't run around with those that do. But because you show partiality, you are guilty of transgressing the entire law. Your entire um, walk with the Lord is in jeopardy. Yeah, I know you don't smoke crack and I know you don't watch those movies and I know you go to church every Sunday and I know you don't cheat on your spouse. And I know that you don't, you know, uh, um, beat your kids and kick the dog. But listen, because you're so full of it and you think you're better than that guy or that girl over there that walks into church and they look a little different and they smell a little different. And they come from a different nation or they come from a different socioeconomic uh, status than you or they're a different color or they're, they're this or that. Because you show partiality against them, then you have, you have abandoned and corrupted the entire law. I know, it's horrible. Thanks, James. This book will step on your toes. Listen, uh, Chuck Missler, he does this study on James. It's really good. You ought to check it out YouTube. Chuck Missler. Missile with an E R on the end. Uh, he, he said something profound. I heard it today. He said, if you're hanging off a cliff by a chain, you know, you're holding on to a chain, oh my God, and the chain has ten links in it. And one of them fails. One of them breaks. You're going down. It's what James is saying. That's what Jesus is saying. Cameron, if you think you're so good because you're not on death row because you didn't stab somebody in the heart with a knife like that guy or that girl. Cameron, if you think you're all that and you're too good to go take your hoity-toity preacher self into the prison and love on some guys that nobody else loves on, if you're too good for that, then listen, you don't understand that you also are a murderer because you lied. You've broken the entire, listen, if you broke one of them, you'll break all ten of them, give it enough time. That's what he's saying. All right, I hope you're still with me. Verse twelve. So speak and so do as those who will be judged by the law of liberty. So Cameron, you need to speak and do as though you know you're gonna be judged by the law of liberty also. For judgment is without mercy to the one who has shown no mercy. What? Hey, Cameron, you're going to judgment. And if you don't show mercy, why would you expect mercy to be shown to you? Uh, that doesn't sound very biblical there, Cameron. That, uh, God, God is love. God would never judge me the way that I judge others. God would never hold me to the same standard as I hold others to their standard, to that standard. Well, God just knows that those, those people really hurt me and God just knows that, you know, that, that I'm just, you know, better than they are. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us of our trespasses. Uh-oh. Forgive us of our sins, forgive us of our trespasses as we forgive those who have trespassed against us? Is that in the Bible? For judgment is without mercy to the one who has shown no mercy. Cameron, mercy triumphs over judgment. Listen, grace and mercy, they're two words. They're extremely hard to understand. It is so hard to understand the validity, the depth, the gravity of them. Um, here, here's what I'd like for you. I'd like for you to write down in big, bold letters, grace, or just write down grace equals power and presence. I'm not, uh, I, I wanna just give you the challenge. When you read the word grace in scripture, take that word out and put in power and presence. And watch if you get the same meaning and it may help you grasp. It helps me understand it a little bit better. But grace is the power and the presence of God. For by grace you have been saved, by the power of God you've been saved, by the presence of God in your life. When the presence of God came in your life, you were saved. By grace you have been saved. So try it. So just try interjecting power and presence where you see the word grace and, and see if you don't come up with the same definition. Or, or a definition that you may be able to, that we may be able to grasp a little bit better. Grace is getting what you don't deserve. Grace really just means you get what you don't deserve. For by grace you were saved. You do not deserve salvation. Well, yes, I do. Okay, well, what did you do that was so salvation worthy? What did you do to deserve salvation? Well, I'm a good person. God wants me in heaven. He sure doesn't want Billy over there. He is a bad guy. And Suzie, oh, she is wicked. Let me just tell you. I should probably quit using the word. I always have Joe Bob and Suzie and now that our friend Suzie's watching some, you know, probably should change the name to, I'll use Jill. That'll be a Jill. Yeah, that's her sister. Nevermind. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up. Grace is getting what you grace is getting something you don't deserve. Mercy is not getting what you deserve. If a cop pulls you over and you were speeding twenty miles an hour, he shows mercy by not giving you a ticket that you deserve. He doesn't show you grace. Shows you mercy. Mercy triumphs over judgment. Listen, did you know that sometimes when you judge people, you judge accurately? You're spot on. That guy's a corrupt, drug dealing, wife beaten, no paying child support, thief murdering, lying, no job, sleeping on the couch, person. I'm not saying that we just excuse everything and let people walk all over us. I'm not negating justice and, and correction and rebuke. But I'm just saying, when that person walks in, we need to show mercy. And not give them what they always deserve. Because we know that we were given something that we didn't deserve. Make sense? Who is your neighbor? Right now with the racial division in America, black against white, policeman against civilian. It's tragic what's happening in our society. Because it is heightening people's awareness to things that draw us to be different and it's almost creating divide. It's almost fueling it by some of the things. The comments that are, that are being made and the mindsets that are being projected. There's real issue. There's real racial prejudice. There's real um, uh, persecution. Not negating that at all. Please hear me. There is, um, abuse of power in some places and by some people. But I, I really do know that God is calling you and I to love our neighbor. And, and when it says, you shall, verse eight, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. Miles McPherson is a, is a black man. He's a pastor in San Diego. He runs the Rock Church. Uh, highly recommend him. Would love it if you watched his sermons and, and subscribed to his. But he wrote a book called The Third Option. And that third option is addressing the racial divide in, in America. And he wrote this book three years ago. This is not a book written in response to, um, the current crisis. Stacey and I had the privilege of, of hearing him preach this message live in person and, and it really, I walked away, I walked away a little offended going, oh, I don't, I don't, I, I'm not prejudiced. I don't, I don't show partiality. So I'm kinda trying to use that word, show partiality. I, I don't do that. I don't show preferential treatment to people of like skin color. I don't. And God's going, hey, Cameron, Cameron, do you love everybody as your neighbor? Well, no, cuz everybody's not my neighbor. I don't wanna live next to that guy. If I had to live next to them, God, there would be war. Now, think about that. I don't know who you have a struggle with partiality with. May not be a skin color, but it very well could be that person you used to work with. Well, they, they bad mouthed me and they stole over my position and, but I, I'm not saying they didn't do something bad. But do you love them as your neighbor? See, if we in America would just choose to view everybody as our neighbor, regardless of skin color, regardless of position of employment, regardless of nationality, regardless of their past, their clothes, whatever, their status, their lack of status, whatever that is, if we would choose to love them as our neighbor, that would probably take every ounce of courage that we could muster. And that would require great forgiveness. And that would require great mercy. But that's what Jesus is calling us to. I hate it when I judge people. Let's keep moving. Fourteen. Are you still with me? Fourteen. What does it profit my brethren? If someone says he has faith but does not have works? And we'll pick, we'll pick back up on this next time because we won't have time to cover it and do it, do justice. But Cameron, what, what good does it do for you to say that you love Jesus? But your works show partiality? Well, you know, I'm just hanging out with those Christians that believe like I do. I can't hang out with those Lutherans over there. Are you kidding me? I'm just laughing cuz I know the Lutheran, I know some specific Lutherans that are listening to me. I love you very much. I'm just messing with you. What does it profit Cameron? If he says that he has faith, but he doesn't have works? Cameron, if you say you love Jesus, how can you hate that guy that you see? If you love Jesus, how can you judge that entire nationality of people? If you say that you have faith, how can you hate that person you used to work with or that person that did you wrong? See, can faith save you? If a brother or sister is naked and destitute of daily food and one of you says to them, oh, be in peace, brother, sister, be warmed, naked brother and sister. But you do not give them the things that are needed for the body, what does it profit? For also faith by itself, if it does not have works, is dead. But someone will say, you have faith and I have works. Show me your faith without your works and I will show you. Show me your faith without your works and I will show you my faith by my works. Listen, this partiality discussion needs to be had in the church. This partiality of, uh, racial divide, this partiality of, um, what some have called the most segregated hour of the week. You know, the white church, the black church, the Asian church, the Filipino church, the Pentecostal church, the Baptist church, the, the Lutheran church, the, the Presbyterian church, you know, I mean, I mean, the, you know, we have all these different partialities and we've so divided ourselves. And God is saying, listen, there, there's, there's some legitimate reasons to different groups like attracts like. Different groups like attracts like. But. If you love Jesus and I love Jesus. Then like attracts like. And it doesn't really matter what your label is or what your surface is. We all have friends and brothers and sisters who are different than us. But God says, listen. They will know you by your love. And the, the, the fruit that you produce is an outward manifestation of what's on the inside. Cameron, if you say that you have faith, back it up with your works. Now here's the crazy part. When I have to pour extra energy and time into you. Our money, our finances, our resource, or talent, when I have to give more. It costs me something. And that's part of a work. Work costs you something. You get paid for it, but at the end of the day, whether you work at Walmart, you're digging ditches, you work in politics at the Capitol. You work at Dell. At the end of the day, you're tired because you worked. But you get rewarded on payday. Faith without works is dead. Jesus says, don't come into church and glorify me. When you work to show partiality. Listen, I don't claim to have the answers. I'm not using this platform to for, uh. To try to say that I understand what's happening in America and the divide. But I do believe this, if we'll go to the word of God and not show partiality. If I just won't show partiality. To the rich versus the poor. The black, I I wrote down some, the black versus the white, the, um, had a, had a good little thing running. Um, the, you know, oh, I was, I was texting a friend of mine. I I just said, you know, if we won't show partiality between skin color. Um, and the, the Baptist versus the Pentecostal, the, the, um. The, uh, blue, blue collar versus the white collar. The, uh, the rich versus the poor, the teeth to the no teeth, the hair to the no hair, you know, if we won't show partiality. And we'll love each other as our neighbor. This world would look at the body of Christ and go, how are, how are, how are they all getting along? How did they all love each other? See. If we'll deal like with the protests and with the divide and and we'll say, we'll just love each other. And we'll learn about the inward man, the inward woman. We may see a lot in that person that we could judge. We could see a lot in that person that we could divide over. But mercy triumphs over Cameron's judgment, right? Mercy triumphs over that. So Stacy's writing me a note, love covers a multitude of sin. I love you guys. Thank you so much. I wanna just push you. Live your life to win the prize. We're gonna go to judgment. We'll talk more about judgment next time. Uh, read James chapter two verse fourteen, starting at fourteen, faith without works is dead. Faith without works. Hey homeless guy. I know you're cold. I know you're naked. I know you're hungry. But hey, be warm, brother. Be filled with the, the bounty of. God or something, I don't know. Be filled. And have a good day. See you later. Jesus says, what good does that do them? Feed them, clothe them, love on them, then. Tell them about Jesus. God's calling you to the nations, by the way. Um, I'll end with this. This is a prophetic word. The Lord's telling me to say this. Um, God is calling you to the nations. He says, take my gospel to the nations. That very commandment said, hey Jews. Don't show partiality to Jews only. Don't preach to your own kind. Go over there to them Gentiles over there in Rome. Go over there and them other, of those other people. Go to the nations and share the gospel of Jesus Christ without partiality. By the God, we love you and we bless you in Jesus's name. Thanks so much for joining us. We'll see you Tuesday night, six thirty, same place, same time. Uh, Facebook Live. God bless you.